All right, good evening. Welcome to the regular city council meeting. Today is February 20th, 2024. I guess, let's go ahead and stand and join me in pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, thank you. So Jeff Weisensel is, Mayor Weisensel is out of the, out of town this week, so with me being the vice mayor for the year, I am taking over for, for Jeff tonight. Before we begin, before we begin the meeting, I'd like to honor the three brave first responders who tragically lost their lives on Sunday while serving their community and our neighbors in Burnsville. So police officer Paul Elmstrand, firefighter and paramedic Adam Finseth, and police officer Matthew Rugi. I'd like to please join me in a moment of silence to honor their bravery and sacrifice. Also, before we get started, I'd also like to acknowledge the, all the brave men and women who were on the scene during and after the tragic event. Officers from all over Dakota County, Bloomington, were also there that day providing tactical support and backup. They ran towards the tragedy at great personal risk to try to save a family in trouble. This group included four of Rosemount's finest. Four of our police officers were also on the scene. We want to acknowledge their bravery and their willingness to serve. We want to thank them for the work that they do to protect, honor, and serve Rosemount and the surrounding area. We want them to know that they have our support today and every day. On behalf of the council, I ask that you continue to provide support, prayers, and encouragement to our officers, firefighters, paramedics, and dispatchers, and everybody else involved in public safety, not just today, not just tomorrow, but in the weeks and months ahead. This pain does not appear, disappear overnight. They need us now more than ever. Thank you. With that, we're going to move into the regular agenda. First of all, are there any edits or adjustments to the agenda?
No, sir.
Nope. All right, with that, can someone make a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
And second.
All right, motion by Freski, second by Tyson. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carries three to zero. We have an agenda. Item number three, presentations, proclamations, acknowledgements. We do not have any other items in this evening, so that completes item number three. Moving on to item number four, any responses to public comment? Is there any prior public comments that we need to respond to this evening? I don't believe so.
Nope, and on record.
Okay. All right, so then we're going to move on to, that completes item number four. Item number five is public comments. So if there's anybody in the audience or online, I guess, got to be in the audience. Okay, got to be in the audience that wishes to address the council on subjects that are not part of the agenda this evening, we will welcome you to the podium. Please state your name, your address, and try to keep your comments to three minutes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Jackie Young. I'm a resident of Rosemount, and I appreciate the council listening to residents, and I'm here to kind of give an update on last year's street improvement project. I was here last year too, so, and last year it all began about in January with information given to homeowners, and I feel like from the very beginning, homeowners could have used more information. In general, as always, you would want to know what is the cost of this project going to be? And finally, in May, the council did respond, and homeowners were given information on kind of associated costs, fees. Secondly, homeowners really wanted to know, well, what is this, how is this going to affect me? What is the work going to be done? Where? Kind of a general timeline. And I know that the city provided like weekly updates, but even with the weekly updates, sometimes we really weren't made aware of which street would be closed, when, when we would have to move cars. Sometimes we didn't know until we had a knock on our door in the morning. The scope of the project, I think, was bigger than they anticipated. Putting in utilities involved digging up the streets for the sewers, filling it back in overnight, digging it back up, putting in water, filling it back up, laying a base for the road, constructing the road, paving the road. So homeowners, it wasn't just a week or so that our home was disrupted, it was four and a half months, from mid-June until the day before Thanksgiving was when they finished. Because of the rural nature of our area, I think the access was difficult. There wasn't always a street right behind you to get out. Dump trucks had to come in one way the whole time, and unfortunately, that was close to my home, so they would back up a long distance and dump their load. It was, it was a lot of, a lot more of disruption than I think most people anticipated. And then again, because of the one-way street that I live on, we actually had two and a half weeks where our road was almost impassable. There was a time where it rained, and really, not until we kind of, kind of spoke up, until residents spoke up to the city, that we needed a rock brought in, then that happened. Road signs, I think, weren't put up to notify other drivers. Countless time, Amazon trucks were trying to turn around. Pizza or food delivery was pretty much impossible for a few weeks. And before that, when it was really dry, the roads were dusty, and they didn't come and water it down again until residents started to speak up. So I think some of the things could have been anticipated. We were told like our garbage would be moved, but again, we always had to tell them almost every Tuesday. All of these seems like minor inconveniences, but the, they also pointed out some of the negligence of the Northern Lines Construction Crew. Residents had to point out gas lines, power lines, internet lines, and basically keep an eye out on what was going on. Beginning with the very first week, power went out, and it happened during, about three times during the process. Two of them happened during dinner hour, making it difficult to make any meals. The internet went out several times, making it working from home unreliable for many residents. On at least two occasions, workers started to place fire hydrants in areas that obstructed homeowner access, and homeowners needed to intervene and adjust the placement. Also, on at least two occasions, the proper clearance to the road from the utility connection was not done, resulting in them having to come back and dig it up again and redo it. So as a resident, I want the city to be aware that the quality of the work done was subpar, and that Northern Line contracting, maybe they were the cheapest bidder, the lowest bidder for a reason. I also want the city to kind of learn about the process and be more proactive with residents in other construction projects. Thank you for your time.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you for coming forward and sharing your, sharing your experience. I don't know if this evening, Mr. Agar, you want to address some of the items. I, I think just to speak for the council in general, I think we're aware of, you know, some of the challenges, you know, we got a lot of communication from residents, so it wasn't, it wasn't, you know, hiding from us. It certainly was, been pretty, pretty, you know, communicated pretty, pretty, quite a bit, you know, some of the things that I think lessons learned probably. So I don't know, Mr. Agar, you want to address some of them, or do you want to wait and respond in a couple, you know, in the next council meeting, or how do you, how do you have to handle it?
Yeah, I'll just say a few things, council members. I, I understand that reconstructions are always going to present a litany of inconveniences for residents that are in the affected neighborhood. And we, we did, I think we did listen quite a bit and make adjustments along the way. I'm not going to say that our responses were perfect every time. That's, a lot of things are unpredictable and do change quickly, just to be able to address construction items in the field. We also don't always know what we're going to find when we're doing excavations and have to call audibles and make game-changing decisions with the design sometimes in the field. Few things like that happen with this project. I, I do understand what you're saying. We're, we're kind of dissatisfied with the progress and the responsiveness of the contractor as well. But exactly what you were doing by calling or emailing or even saying words at our public hearings in here, we do take to heart, and we do try to address those as best we can, given kind of the mix of events and things that we're, we're trying to accomplish altogether. It's by no means a perfect process, but we learn something from every experience, and we do take that forward into future projects, so, thank you.
Yeah, and I'll echo, I'll echo what Mr. Agar's saying too, is again, we've had the conversations with, with staff. Certainly, what I've seen from the staff in this and other projects, in, you know, broader projects, not just construction projects, but just in anything, when things don't go well, they really do buckle down and learn from it and have conversations internally. In this case, with the contractor, you know, how are we going to do things going forward? So these kind of situations don't occur. I've seen that, you know, in my six years on council, very, very frequently from the, from the staff. If it doesn't go well this time, let's figure out and how we make it better next time, so. Any other comments from council?
I was just going to say, we appreciate your feedback, because the feedback is how we do learn, and we take that feedback, and I think the staff does a tremendous job of taking that feedback and then making adjustments, and then trying to show up better the next day. And still leading with positive intent, but I thought they did a good job of adjusting through this process, and your feedback is welcome. Thank you.
Yep, absolutely. All right. All right, so that, any other individual in the audience that's interested in coming forward and sharing any public comment for the council, for items that are not on the One more time? Ask one more time? All right. All right, so with that, we're going to close the public comment. With that, we will move on to the consent agenda. Tonight, we have items A through R. Is there any items, I do want to pull item number, item D, 6D. I also want to pull item H. So I'd like to pull D and H. Is there any other items on the agenda that council members would like to pull?
No.
No? Nope? Okay. All right, so with that, we will move, I'll ask for motion, I'll list out the items on the consent agenda. Items A through R, with those excluded, the bill listings, so all the payments that were made, minutes of the February 6th, regular meeting minutes, meeting, meeting minutes of the February 6th, 2024 work session proceedings. I will call out, we are excluding D. I do want to call out some of the donations that are on the agenda specifically. So item 6A, donation acceptance from the Rosemount Lions Club. That was in the amount of $2,400 that will be used, donated for purposes of the spring egg hunt this spring. Also, item 6F, donation acceptance from Merchants Bank in the amount of $1,000 to be put towards events at Leprechaun Days. And also, I'll get to L when I get there. Let's see, so item G is a request by Maplewood Development for Amber Fields, 15th Edition Preliminary and Final Plaid Approval to create 167 single-family lots. Item 6H, Comprehensive Sanitary Sewer Plan Amendment, Project Bigfoot, which I did pull. Item I, renewal of the Danner Inc. Small-Scale Mineral Extraction Permit for 2024. Item J, land donation agreement with CNC Development LLC. K, for medical leave of absence in the fire department. Item L, I do want to call out, it's a donation acceptance from Captain Brad Miller. Captain Brad Miller, who has been a longtime firefighter on our voluntary, voluntary fire department, has donated an elliptical machine to be used for the fire, fire department for training, for training and workouts. Approximate value is about $6,000, so we thank Captain Brad Miller for donating that to the department. That's, that's outstanding and very, very much appreciated. Let's see, item M, appointment of additional election judges for the 2024 elections. Item N is renewal of consumptions and display setup permit for the meeting place. O, request by Maplewood Development for rezoning, a major amendment to the Amberfields Plan Unit Development Agreement Preliminary and Final Plaid Approval for Amberfields 14th Edition. Item P, encroachment agreement with University of Minnesota, Audrey Avenue Private Water Main. Item Q, request by Builders Lot Group LLC for approval of a time extension for the Bray Hill Final Plaid. And finally, item R, request by Simna, Simnabray Properties LLC for a minor amendment to the custom apparel CA gear planned unit development. So again, with items D and H hold for further discussion, would someone like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda with those items removed?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda with those items removed.
I'll second.
All right, motion by Tyson, second by Freski. Roll call, please.
Freski?
Aye.
Essler?
Aye.
Tyson?
Aye.
Motion carries three to zero. With that, we will move on to item 6D, and I am going to turn that over, I wanted to pull this for recognition. We've got a substantial donation from Flint Hill Resources, and with that, I will turn that over to chief, Fire Chief Rich Schroeder.
Good evening, thank you, council members. You know, over the years, as fire chief, I've really come to appreciate the partnerships and collaborations of the businesses in our area, and oftentimes, I don't really have to do anything. They just ask, what do you need at the fire department, right? So it makes my job really easy, and we always seem to need something, and this time was nothing different. We use a little unit called a four-gas monitor, and it's probably one of the most important tools we carry on our truck. You know, this little thing might not weigh very much, but the weight and the work that it does is substantial. We use this a lot for our CO alarm calls that we get usually in the middle of the night when alarms are going off, and these things can make things go good or bad, right? So either we go there and we clear the house, and it's a faulty detector, or we have to call up the gas company because we got CO levels in the house. And so these get used a tremendous amount, and they're on all of our command vehicles and two of our engines. So I have Fire Chief Dan Mo with me tonight from Flint Hills, and again, timely request, what do you need? Well, our four-gas monitors were just about the point of replacement, and you can see the cost, they're not cheap, but they carry a tremendous amount of weight, like I said. So we immediately said we could replace our four-gas monitor. So that's how we got to this point, so through some work with Assistant Chief Berent and some others in the department doing some research, we decided to stay with the same style we have. They've been very reliable, we've had very few issues with them. These do get calibrated every month at our monthly trainings and make sure that they're reading correctly, so we also had to purchase two calibration stations that allow us to do that each month. And that's a very important part of this tool, because if you're not calibrating on a monthly basis, they can be off a little bit, and that's, that can be the matter of life or death. So we take that very seriously. So Chief Mo is here to say a few words. We appreciate the partnership, they've come to us many times in my 10-plus years as fire chief, and purchased some very amazing things for us that we probably wouldn't have had. So I'll turn it over to Chief Mo, and he can say a few words.
Thank you. Thanks.
Yeah, thank you, Chief Schroeder. Just want to appreciate Rosemount Fire, it's always a pleasure working with them guys, trying to help them out where we can. And in this case, the four-gas monitors, not only working with the fire department, but helping to keep the community safe, the community members, kind of twofold. It's good to know that we've got this caliber of personnel trained to use this equipment. If we were to ever have a bad day out at the refinery, we could call on them guys to help us support with monitoring around the plant itself as well. So again, I just want to say thank you, and yeah, it's, it's always been a pleasure working with, with that group, so.
Awesome. And just to, just to point out, for those of you listening, the donation from Flint Hills Resources is in the amount of $13,800, just for those of you guys who don't look online for, you know?
Substantial, thank you.
Yep, very substantial donation, so thank you, thanks for that. And by the way, I called you Rich Schroeder, I don't know why I called you Rich Schroeder, I know it's Rick Schroeder. And I always remember that, because it's the kid on Silver spoons, the Rick Schroeder. That's, that's how I remember your name, is really Rick, so I apologize.
I've been called worse, all good.
Thanks, chief.
Okay, let's see, the item, the next item is item H. Oh, oh, we need to make a motion to approve that, yep, I'm sorry.
I'll make a, I'll make a motion to approve a resolution accepting a donation from Flint Hills Resources for $13,799.94.
Second.
All right, motion by Freski, second by Tyson. Roll call, please.
Essler?
Aye.
Tyson?
Aye.
Freski?
Aye.
All right, thank you, motion carries three to zero. Thank you again for the donation, and thanks for your partnership with the Rosemount Fire Department. Let's see, we're going to move on to item H. Okay, this is, the motion, the recommended action is to adopt a resolution amending the comprehensive sanitary sewer plan for the Rosemount Technology Edition. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Agar, Public Works Director.
Thanks, Acting Mayor Essler. Council members, this item is essentially an administrative documentation, sort of step that we have to take, resulting from the, the manner in which the, the site layout and the infrastructure is going to be connected with our wastewater system for serving the property that Project Bigfoot is being constructed on. When the city does its comprehensive plan for all of its utility systems, we, we have a vision of how things could play out, but it's not necessarily a prescription on exactly how they do end up playing out. There are different ways in which utility services can be provided to different properties, and in this case, the sewer connection for this complex is more easily able to be served directly to an interceptor sewer that Met Council has running right alongside the property. So rather than bring a large trunk line to this site from elsewhere in the city that would cost millions of dollars, take a whole nother project, take time to do, this was the engineering solution that presented itself as a more efficient way of doing things. But all that said, the Met Council, whenever we do something that's different than predicted with these systems, we're required to file a comprehensive plan amendment with them. So the first step in doing that was to have a couple of exhibits modified from our comp plan. Our engineering consultant did that and provided those to us, those were in your packet for reference, and by approving the resolution then tonight, we would forward that information to Met Council for them to provide their level of overall approval for the amendment itself.
Okay, thank you, and I just want to confirm here, basically, because, the reason this is being able to be redone is because the amount of wastewater we're expecting because of what's being developed on this site versus what was likely expected with multiple users is, is less wastewater, and that's the reason why this is acceptable?
That is, that is a fact. The amount of wastewater flow from this property is less than would have been projected based on just the land use alone that was designated for the 2040 comp plan, but that is not really the driving reason for it. The driving reason for it is the physical proximity to a different trunk sewer line that Met Council owns and operates that's adjacent to the property, and the topography works out such that it can drain to that pipe rather than a different route. So it was a bit more about the technical connecting point A and point B than it was the amount of flow.
So just, just kind of curious, why wasn't that the original plan?
I, we didn't know how this land would be transformed in terms of topography and, and number of buildings and so forth, or at what point in time it would develop. It's theoretically possible properties to the east could have developed ahead of it, and for that, we would have brought trunk lines to those sites. But this one's going now, and so this is a different alternative than originally contemplated.
All right, makes sense. All right, any, any other questions from the council? Okay, with that, I'll make a motion to adopt a resolution amending the comprehensive sanitary sewer plan for the Rosemount Technology Edition.
I'll second.
All right, motion by myself, second by Freski. Roll call, please.
Tyson?
Aye.
Freski?
Aye.
Essler?
Aye.
Motion carries three to zero. With that, that completes the consent agenda items. At this point, we will move on to item seven. Let's see, 78, to propose approving final project scope, order improvements, and authorize advertisement for bids for Aspen Avenue Extension City Project 2024-02. With that, I'll turn it over to Mr., our Public Works Director, Mr. Agar.
Thank you again, council members. Tonight, you have a resolution for consideration to approve the project scope, order the, the final plans to be completed, and authorize staff to solicit bids for the Aspen Avenue Extension Project. Ahead of that action and conducting a public hearing, I'll just run through the project details a little bit here on the screen. So I know we've, we've talked about this at a couple of points in the recent past, for instance, when you accepted the feasibility report for this project about a month ago. Aspen Avenue is a new street from the ground up that would connect County Road 42 with Conamara Trail just to the immediate east of the Lifetime Project site, so that is shown on the screen here with the yellow highlight. Here are just a few of the features that would come along with this project. It's pretty basic, street pavement, a brand-new road section, of course, but also some utilities, sewer and water utilities, and stormwater drainage would be built in conjunction with this to serve not only the, excuse me, the needs of the street, drainage and so forth, but to allow the development of adjacent property and connectivity with the ongoing Lifetime site. In addition to those things that are within the Aspen Avenue corridor, there'd also be a right-turn lane coming off of County Road 42 to northbound Aspen Avenue. And then we'd also include a pedestrian trail connectivity that would run the length of Aspen Avenue and provide some interconnection with the forthcoming Vermillion Highlands Trail, the regional trail that Dakota County's working on, as well as our Parks Department. That one includes an underpass in the not-too-distant future, excuse me again. Here's just a different. Here's just a different, um, little bit more detailed drawing of what that would look like. It's, uh, it, it's again, a pretty basic road section that's along the east side of the Lifetime Project there. You can see how it interconnects with the development streets that are going to be built or have been built in the Lifetime Project. A little bit on costs and funding, at this point, our, our estimates are telling us we'd expect to have a project cost of about nine hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars. That includes all of the overhead, the design, the engineering, the, uh, field oversight and project administration, as well as contingencies. And funding for this project, although it would be funded upfront with a variety of city resources, we do have special assessments that will recapture, uh, the costs for that and those would be charged to the adjacent properties. I will note, one of the properties is owned by the Port Authority, so, uh, although it's, it's kind of city property, it, it can be categorized as a special assessment to that land. Um, the assessment hearing is something that we will do at a later date. That comes after we get bids back and can recompute the, uh, expected total project costs. That'll happen later this spring. Uh, here's just a little bit of a schedule on that. Of course, we're at February 20th and we're about to enter the public hearing phase tonight. Uh, presuming that council feels, uh, compelled to adopt a resolution, we would receive that and then we would go on our way to complete the plans, get it out on the market for prospective bidders to, uh, take a look at. We'd receive bids in early April, a word of contract in May, and then we would work on those aforementioned, uh, calculations for the assessments and then go on from there with beginning construction in the summertime and wrap that up in the fall. Uh, I will note that this project's going to have to be heavily coordinated, not only with the, the remaining projects scheduled for Lifetime, but the city will also be doing a trunk water main project along the County Road 42 corridor. We just authorized that to get bids at the last meeting. So a lot of interconnection among a variety of things happening out here. Uh, and that's it, that's all that I have for details for now, and I can turn it back for questions and ultimately to, uh, initiate the public hearing.
Go ahead.
Do you mind going back to the first slide where it had a map with the yellow line that went through? Perfect.
Yep.
So I'm curious, when I'm looking at this, is it just the landowners on the right and left side of the yellow line that would be assessed?
It is. Yep, that's correct. Every abutting, uh, property would receive a special assessment.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
And my question just goes to, I know we had talked about this, but you, right next to it alongside it's gonna be a trail as well?
Yes.
And is that the trail that's gonna go underneath 42 or is that something different?
That's not the exact segment, that one will be more in the middle center of the Lifetime Development, uh, several hundred feet to the west is where that's projected to go, and I don't know if I'm...
At a later...
...up, Dan, but...
At a later time, right?
At a later time, that's a separate project.
And then that would be part of the whole Greenway Trail that we were talking about?
Yes.
Okay, thanks. So that has nothing to do with this?
Correct, that's a separate project, separate design, separate contract altogether.
Okay, thanks.
So who, who are the two landowners, or who are the landowners that are affected by this then for, from an assessment standpoint? I'm assuming Lifetime to the west?
Lifetime to the west, the Port Authority is the club site, so that's a separate landowner itself. Then on the east side, we have, uh, two private entities, one of which is, uh, Monarch Properties on the southwest corner, the little square that you see there. Um, and then DCTC is also a landowner directly adjacent, they're kinda where the, uh, the alignment, the yellow line cuts through that small corner in the northwest part of that site. That's where the old City Hall complex was and, uh, we understand they're actively seeking a, a buyer to presumably come in and redevelop that site at some point in time.
So I'm just curious, 'cause the yellow line, um, that southwest corner looks like it's a perfect square, which isn't abutted to where the road is going to be. So who's the, who's the owner of the land, the way it's drawn here anyway, where the, 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 the road is going right through that kinda unusually shaped par, parcel of property? Who, who owns that?
I'll see if I can walk you through this with the cursor here a little bit. I, hopefully you can see the arrow here.
Yep, I can see it, yep.
This, this curved shape and, and straight north-south section, that's actually right-of-way at this point, that was platted with the Lifetime Development.
Okay.
And so anything that abuts that either side is, is property.
Unusual shape is the right-of-way?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. And then we're through a...
So then it goes to the next parcel owner, so the next line over then is who ultimately gets assessed, is that right?
Any, anything that would butt up and, and touch that right-of-way corridor is assessable, yes.
And there's, you said there's just two owners on the east side or is there three?
There are, there's the DCTC parcel, this kind of L shape, there's the Monarch Properties parcel, this little square. The section up here is a piece that is going to be donated to the city from the developer of the Emerald Isle.
Oh.
Development, and that, um, that action was actually taken in the consent agenda, so that'll move along that process, but that, that will become city property. It's, it's one of those things that hindsight for us probably should have been handled when the original plating of Emerald Isle was done, but there was some uncertainty about how things would, uh, materialize in and around that area, so that was left off the table for the time being. We're following through with that.
So there's a little trade-off there of, we're not, they're not being assessed, but they're also donating the land.
Correct.
Right, so it's, it's kind of an offset there. Okay. All right, any other questions?
Nope, that covered it, thank you.
Okay, all right, with that, does someone want to...
Yeah, I'll make a motion to conduct public hearing, right?
Oh, yeah, I need, oh, yeah, I'm sorry. I need, I need to open the, uh, I need to, I do need to open the public hearing, uh, and provide any opportunity for anybody who wants to come forward and, um, have any comment on the, um, on what we're, on the recommended action for this evening. So if anybody's interested in the audience to come forward and has any questions or comments, please come forward. Anybody online?
No.
Do we even allow online?
No, we don't.
We don't allow online, take that back.
I'm just trying to be nice.
He's rolling.
All right, one more try to see if anybody's interested in coming forward. All right, uh, with that, I'm going to, uh, make a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll second.
Uh, motion and a second, uh, let's see, any further discussion? Uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? All right, uh, public hearing is closed. Uh, with that, any other further questions on the proposed, uh, action? Uh, with that, I'll, uh, I'll, I'll recommend, uh, that, uh, we, we adopt a resolution to approve project scope, order improvements, and authorize an advertisement for bids, Aspen Avenue Extension.
Second.
All right, motion by Essler, second by Tyson, uh, any further discussion? Uh, roll call please.
Freski?
Aye.
Essler?
Aye.
Tyson?
Aye.
Uh, motion carries three, two, zero, that, that completes item number seven, A. Uh, we do not have any unfinished business on the agenda this evening, so that takes us to new business, which will be item number, uh, item nine, A, uh, request, uh, to adopt a resolution approving the Spectral Alloys Third Edition Preliminary Plat Subject to Conditions. With that, I'll turn it, um, I'll turn it over to our Community Development Director, Mr. Keenberger.
Thank you, Acting Member and Mayor, uh, members of the council. Um, yeah, Anthony's on vacation, so I would be presenting this item for you guys this evening. So this was a project that was brought to Planning Commission with a public hearing held at their last meeting on January 23rd. I'll, I'll walk you through a little bit of what Spectral is doing, kinda their, their start to finish along with the recommended action in front of City Council tonight. So a summary of Spectral's request, um, they are redeveloping and developing an existing parcel off of Doyle Path, so this is off of Highway 55. On the north side of 55, you head, um, west out of town, um, including expansion of their existing building to house equipment to produce aluminum billet as, and also including improvements to their outdoor storage area. For those of you who have been out there, they recently did a warehouse expansion, it's really transforming the look of the site out there, and this is the next step in their continued expansion, um, and addition at their, their facility there. So three components to their request, but only one is in front of City Council tonight. The two previous actions were acted on, um, via the Planning Commission acting as the, um, uh, the Board of Adjustments, so they did approve a sign, a site plan as well as a variance that reduced the minimum setback from Courthouse Boulevard, or 55 as most people refer to it, from seventy-five feet to fifty-five feet, uh, feet. That was approved by the Planning Commission on January 23rd due to the unique site constraints. And the action before City Council this evening is a request for a preliminary plat that proposes consolidating the site into a single parcel. So a brief overview, the red is kinda the totality of the site as they continue their expansion redevelopment of this. Um, you see the yellow highlight there of the, uh, the exist, the current expansion that's under consideration that was approved by the Planning Commission at their last meeting. Um, the other thing is I'll get into the presentation here, you'll note that there is a city street Doyle Path that runs into the site previously, these were under multiple owners, and that was, is a public street, um, to serve those multiple parcels. It's the city's recommendation as this is now under a single ownership that that public road as well as utilities be vacated as part of a future action. Um, we do have an application pending, um, that will come before the council in March. So this is kinda that next step in the chain of events to facilitate the Spectral expansion and redevelopment. Little bit of site history, in 1973 is when Spectral Alloys was established, in 2014, um, custom clean discharge, and then it lists a couple of different things that they do out there, so sorting of shredded materials from different metals, and then the recycling of aluminum without the need for smelting. Um, 2018, new aluminum furnaces to allow Spectral to recycle a wider range of aluminum, and then most recently here in 2021, and this is the building that's probably most visible from Highway 55 as you drive by, a warehouse building with office space and then paving of a parking area there. Really kinda cleaned up the overall layout of the site, um, just the way that some of the materials and trucks and stuff were staged out there. So this is a more recent aerial, again, you can see, it's, it should be fairly obvious here, but in the, right along the Highway 55 there, the new warehouse and then directly kind of, if you wanna call it, north and west, um, where there is some, some gravel and existing, that's the site for the, the proposed expansion as a part of their, their plat. Again, the action for City Council tonight is just a preliminary plat approval, the site plan was already approved by Planning Commission at their last meeting. Um, just a different aerial looking, um, I guess it would be from the east towards the northwest a bit of the site. You can see their older and more, um, the existing heavier industrial aspect of their, their business towards the back, a little bit closer to the river. Um, one of the benefits of some of their expansion in their, their new buildings here is it's really screening out a lot of the more unsightly aspects of the, the business there, um, really further by that most recent warehouse expansion. This is a rendering that shows the, um, proposed expansion, so as a part of it, they're proposing a canopy that will cover that storage area. I'll toggle back here, um, two slides, you can see that gravel here, that is largely to be covered by a proposed canopy and then screened with extensive landscaping, again, meeting the requirements of city code for, um, buffering and landscaping through the, the Planning Commission's approvals, as well as the new proposed seventy thousand square-foot building shown in this rendering here. Just an overall image of the plat, again, the recommendation will be that now that is all under common ownership and is being developed as a singular site, that Doyle Path as a city right-of-way be vacated as a part of a future action. Again, just showing the overall, um, layout and just identifying Doyle Path on there. Not a lot of people drive out there, so I'm trying to highlight what, what that is, where that is, and what that, what that looks like. Couple of, um, additional images of the, the elevations, both the south and west, as well as a bird's eye. Couple additional renderings. One of the more complete applications I think we've seen as a while is both the Planning Commission and then in front of you, City Council, really helps illustrate exactly what they're seeking to accomplish out here. Again, an overview showing some of the, the landscaping, the proposed covered canopy, the, um, the new building that would be proposed. And then that brings us to the recommended action in front of you tonight, which is a motion to adopt a resolution approving the Spectral Alloys Third Edition Preliminary Plat, subject to the conditions listed in the resolution. And then just again, that footnote here as a part of this slide for both council and then the public, is that the applicant has submitted a request for their final plat approval, and that's been a, a theme throughout their, their series of approvals here, is kinda cleaning up the, the right-of-way lines, consolidating of the site, um, and then moving it forward, and a condition of the preliminary plat approval is moving forward at that final plat. So, um, as you consider an action for this one, just be aware that the applicant has submitted a request for that final plat approval and vacation of Doyle Path right-of-way, along with that existing, uh, drainage and utility easements in the development area, and again, projected to come before the City Council here in March. With that, I can stand for any questions, um, or go back to any of the exhibits as well.
Yep, any questions of the council, from council?
Yeah, can you go back one slide, right, right here? I, I watched, uh, the Planning, um, Committee kind of look through this. So just from what I see, first of all, it looks like it's cleaning up a lot of this as far as the exterior. Uh, all of these plantings are these, these are all plantings after the building's up and, and established, these are new plantings because they do have a lot of existing trees, so they, they agreed to this, right?
Correct, and one of the, um, findings from the Planning Commission was that they were, um, a slight deficit of required plantings, and since the Planning Commission's action and recommendation, they have revised their application to accommodate, um, all of the required plantings. And we can go back through some of the others that the council wishes to, it shows that some other visuals.
Yeah, I saw, I saw that it had a lot more trees and, and, um, so, so it kind of buffers the road and everything, yeah.
Yep.
Great, thanks.
I don't have any questions, I just, a comment, just kinda echo what, um, Council Member Tyson said, it's come a long way to what it was five-plus years ago, so it, it looks great, it's really nice to see the development that's happening out there.
Yeah, I just got one question, um, so when they, when they come forward and it's all one plat, does that put them in a, in a, in a better position to do anything that they're not allowed to do under the current circumstances?
Um, it's, it's more of a function of a requirement of our subdivision ordinance, um, that they combine all of the, it, it's also what will allow the vacation of Doyle Path there. Um, I, I guess probably in a layman's perspective and for the public, the easiest way to think about it is, it's cleaning up the property lines and really cementing them as a part of the, the legal ownership of that, that property.
Entire property with the, taking over the road.
The preliminary plat which is being approved shows that it can be done, here's how it's gonna be done, the final plat is the, we, we, we did it.
Yep, okay, and, and to, to echo, uh, Council Member Freski, I mean, I think, they've come a long ways, I, I think they've done a great job, they're, they're a great, they're a great partner, uh, they're a great business to have in Rosemont, um, what they do for the community and what they do for the environment, and, uh, they, they keep taking really good solid steps in terms of what they're doing for the environment, the visibility to residents who drive down Highway 55, um, I, I think they, again, they continue to invest substantial, substantial, uh, amounts of dollars, uh, into, into doing so, and, uh, we, we wish them continued, uh, luck in their business, uh, and, and they're, 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 they're running a great business, so. Uh, with that, if someone wants to make a motion, um...
I'll make a motion, I'll make a motion to adopt a resolution approving the Spectral Alloys, um, related to this request, oh, hang on, all right, now you just moved my screen. Uh, approve the Third Edition Preliminary Plat, subject to these conditions.
I'll second.
Uh, let's see, motion by Tyson, second by Freski, uh, roll call please.
Tyson?
Aye.
Freski?
Aye.
Essler?
Aye.
All right, motion carries three, two, zero. Uh, with that, that, uh, completes item number nine, A. Uh, so with that, we'll move on to item ten, A, uh, city staff updates. I will turn, uh, uh, Mr. Martin, our city administrator, is out of town on vacation with his family, so with that, I'm gonna turn it over to our administrate, Director of Administration. Oh, no, I'm gonna, uh, Director of Administration. Um, you go ahead first.
I am deferring to Public Works Director Egger for our updates this evening on the new campus project.
All right. Mr. Egger, please.
And I'm gonna take a little departure from how you've received these in the past and...
Oh, boy.
And, uh, show you some photos, uh, just maybe eight or 10 of them here, I...
Showing up your boss when he's out of town?
Why not, you know? Logan will appreciate that, I'm sure he's watching this from afar on a live streaming video here, but, uh, anyhow, uh, continue to make substantial progress on the police and public works campus project. These weather conditions over the winter have really allowed things to fly along, and in particular, the exterior of the building, uh, the roof is nearly complete on the entire complex, now they're doing the last of that on the public works side this week, and, and the forecast is very promising for them to wrap that up. So here's a shot of what that looked like a few weeks ago, um, just amazing progress... Just amazing progress on this overall. Here's another overhead of the site in its entirety, and it won't be long before we're starting to rework the, the ground around the facility here to get into some of those last steps that have to be done for the, the site work. Meanwhile, things on the inside are going at a blistering pace. Here's a shot inside the mechanics bay. We still have the lifts and the concrete floor to put in these spaces and a lot of the things that make it functional, but you can just get a sense for the amount of space that we have there and, and how that'll be a great benefit to our operation. This is a shot from lower in that same room. Countless numbers of steel studs are going up in this place. It's really turning into a labyrinth, and I was out there today with some of my staff and trying to remember which room we were in, and it was, I was getting turned around. I don't have it all memorized in my head yet. I think next group, I'm gonna have to bring along a, a paper map and, and be able to identify that, but this is a common scene if you walked up and down through the corridors. They're, they're pulling miles and miles of conduit in there for electrical and IT purposes, and starting to install some of the HVAC components. Here's another shot of, of, of that activity going on. Police garage area, that does have the concrete floor in it, and they've been working hard on the HVAC systems within that area as of late. Here's the front entry, really resembling the renderings that we saw not all that long ago. So that's starting to take shape. This is just inside the lobby that will welcome the public and visitors and, and staff coming in that front door. You can tell the, the high windows are gonna let a lot of natural light in there and make it into a very welcoming space. And then here's the, the main garage on the Public Works side, and these photos really don't do it justice, I would say, in terms of the volume of space that's under there, but we, we are aiming to get the council out there again in the not-too-distant future, and you'll be able to see for yourselves. Again, this is a, the area where we're storing all of our fleet, our Public Works fleet, so it's, it's very spacious but necessary to get out all of those items under one roof. I think that's it for photography. Just some things coming up in the near term. Again, I mentioned the completion of the roof is right around the corner. They'll continue to pour concrete floors. They had some of the spaces on the Public Works side, the operational side, done just today, and they're gonna continue to move through. I think the main garage is one of the last areas, and that's an enormous floor that they'll end up pouring there, but it's coming up soon. Of course, mechanical, electrical items are all well underway. The windows are probably a couple of months out. I think I heard at last week's update meeting, they're, they're starting to get the measurements finalized, and then it's a, it's a multi-week wait for those to get fabricated and delivered, but more of an early spring installation on that end of things. And then, of course, the drywall that'll define all those interior walls is about to be going up. I think one of the, or a couple of the photos showed racks of drywall ready there on standby, waiting to be installed. So it's continuing to, to go very well out there, and, and staff has been pleased with the progress that they're making, and we're still very much on track to finish this, this fall like we projected.
Awesome. Yeah, I was just gonna say, thanks for showing the pictures. I think that it's, it's great that if the public hasn't gone to the site, there is a site that follows this, but this gives a good idea of just the natural light. We've walked the property a couple times, but the natural light and, and just the, the size of this is, is pretty impressive, so this is great. Thanks.
Appreciate the cue, too, to mention what that website is, because I forgot about that as I was talking here, but it's rosemountmn/pdpw, very easy, short and sweet, so that'll take you to a, a website that's updated on a monthly basis, features more photos and notes on what's been going on out there.
Yeah, it's absolutely exciting to see. I mean, like you said, it doesn't seem that long ago we were sitting down looking at, looking at what it was gonna look like on paper, and now it, it looks just like it did on paper, and it's coming to fruition pretty, pretty quickly, so.
Pretty cool.
Yep, job well done. Awesome. Thanks for the update.
You're welcome.
All right, any other staff updates? Oh?
No further updates.
All right, with that, then I'll move on to the calendar, the upcoming calendar. Let's see, February twenty-sixth, Planning Commission Work Session Meeting. Planning Commission Meeting, February twenty-sixth, from six-thirty to seven-thirty here in Council Chambers. February twenty-sixth, Parks and Recreation Meeting from seven to eight o'clock. February twenty-eighth, there's a Youth Commission Meeting from three-forty-five to four-forty-five. For all the people watching online, either now or later, please come out to the Rosemount Expo on March second, twenty-twenty-four at RCC from nine-thirty to one-thirty. City Staff has assembled quite an event. It's gonna be very family-friendly, food vendors, drinks, and a lot of the businesses in Rosemount and surrounding areas, so we look forward to seeing a lot of the residents attend that on Saturday morning, March second. The next City Council Work Session Meeting is dated, or is scheduled for March fourth, from five to six, with the, the next, next City Council Meeting for March fourth, it's a Monday, as opposed to a Tuesday, scheduled for March fourth from seven, at seven o'clock in Council Chambers. And with that, that completes items on the calendar. Any other items from council, from, from council before I motion to adjourn?
Do you want, any mention of the Leprechaun Days bingo? How was that?
Oh, yeah, it was, it was a huge success. We were packed. I think we were at capacity, and it was record-breaking. I haven't gotten the final numbers yet, but well over ten-thousand dollars was, was, was made to, to help run Leprechaun Days, so, yeah, it was great. People had a lot of fun.
Awesome. Thank you. All right, with that, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, meeting is adjourned. Thank you.